Focus on Liberia. We discuss everything Liberia. From education to politics, arts and culture, entertainment, agriculture, history, religion, family and technology. Focus on Liberia uncovers and showcases the best of Liberia and shows the world the truth about Liberia. We educate, elevate and promote all things Liberia. We conduct interviews, panel discussions, debates and more. Tune in to Focus on Liberia on Facebook and YouTube and be a part of the stories that make up the news.
This is Focus on Liberia and I want to tell this job.
Uh, my last, for me, I was, I was shocked when I heard that from rubbish. There, there is no environmental assessment done yet. Nothing is done yet. Nowadays, a concession is going forward in the future. We will wait for tomorrow to pass it. And we not know the environmental implication of this assessment. How do we vote? Does the chairman have that vote when there's no, no, no assessment done?
Thank you, honorable. So when we started this, um, fully going forward after the round, we hired a third party independent firm that's the law. They conducted the debate and that they also knew so care of certain, um, processes when it comes to that. However, our law does not allow us to do that until the contract is ratified. After that happens, then EPA carries out that the end certificate that is issued. So it's after renovation of that happen.
Are you referring follow-up, follow-ups, Senator Parin?
They follow up the assessment. So when you were, eh, EPA or whatever agency that would be asked to do the assessment, if they do the assessment, they resort advice that it is not in the interest of Liberia to go into such agreement because of the effect of our environment. What do we do?
So like I said, we have, we hired a independent firm that did the first diligence. So then they express due diligence and they carry them. So because of that, that's how we went into the position of this.
Do you have that report?
Yes.
Please, 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 come here, have a look. Senator, follow up.
Senator, uh, chairman, they, 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 uh, they share. Said our law does not permit that.
We got a full report is not open. We position a lot of faster video. Madam, do you have the cabinet of the law or you want to submit it to the committee?
Yeah, I can submit it, but it's.
Thank you. All nice. Oh, I see, yeah, she just showed some of the committee because I don't understand the law fights. You have a law written there? She doesn't have it written. She submitted it. Thank you. Senator, I have it through.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, my concern, my concern has to do with importation of material resources to the concession site or exploration site. Uh, if my memory is right, madam, you responded to one of my, the Senator Michael that, uh, Total is one of the luckiest oil industrial and whenever they carry on exploration or something, they always succeed. Did you say so?
Yes, I did.
Huh?
Yes, I did.
Okay, if so, Total is coming to Liberia and she will be bringing materials. The raw materials are cost attached. And I believe that after discovering of oil, those material that they use to discover the oil will not go free, they will not be free of charge, but it will be deducted based on the exploitation of oil. Is that correct?
Alright.
Now, if so, to the revenue and the financial authority, owing to the fact that Total is one of the quickest company and they are well sophisticated. And most of the importation of mission and matching machinery that will come for drilling, some will come directly overseas. And they are drilling overseas or in the sea. What sophistication do you have? In terms of declaration and disclosure of those assets who attach financial value to in case they discover oil tomorrow and you are doubting what is fair on ground prior to the exploitation?
Parliament, sir.
Okay, uh, hey, your honor, Senator. So imports are governed by whatever legal provision have governed our process. And this includes, for example, import fee declaration, which is issued by the agency of commerce and also shared back with the revenue authority. So the mechanism for actually verifying those, the two entities are best placed to address how they can do that. But as far as we know from the revenue, that's only the one of these. That is a proceeding. The mutual commerce and the revenue authority will have to approve the imports, the manifests and the heartbeat. And because that is when they will know what sort of cost from duties are charged, the cost of the equipment and in the long term, particularly to your question, whenever the issue of cost recovery is being considered, that's how we're going to deal with that.
Well, I ask you a specific question. What do you have? I said, many of people's families will be brought in country and they will be operating in the ocean. And they will pass through the ocean to enter Liberia. They are not entering the soil. The regular importation of commodities. Now, while they're operating, they may have had a decision to charge the commodity to a great site. You have only looked at a physical paper that talk about a salesman of value based on documentation presented to you. But what sophistication do you have overseas to where they will be operating? Should you draw something and they not enter the soil?
I, I don't know the, the, in the revenue, people are best placed to answer that. I don't know from my friend's point of view whether even if you want to use a commodity in the sea, whether it will be required or quite be verified at the point of entry before you can take it to whichever site they want to.
I think, I think concern, uh, my concern is, and it comes from the last time we did drilling here. They could have a chopper, helicopter that will fly from the Bucoliba, Canada, one, a rig, come back. How will you monitor it? Will you have some money on the rig? Yes, yeah.
Uh, thank you, honorable. Uh, so at the regulatory authority, you might have.
He's using it. Let's face it, Mike, please, some.
Okay, fine. Uh, so at the, uh, laboratory petroleum regulatory authority, we have experts, uh, there. And one of those, uh, petroleum geologists, but also, uh, water, uh, geologists are well, as well. So what happens is before receiving those equipments, we have a technical meeting in GOC with those overseas. Giving the number of, uh, equipment that will be beginning, uh, it will be beginning in country. It will be approved by the authority. So like, uh, the operation, uh, that we had, uh, deeply with, uh, ExxonMobil, I was based in Abidjan to verify all equipments that were stipulated in that document that because when those equipment comes, it goes and it should be in our course. So I was there making sure that, okay, you said you were making S, Y and Z, uh, document, eh, equipment. Okay, I'm seeing it. So we do physical inspection before, uh, before those equipment is, uh, uh, difficult to work. And then I believe because you have a collaboration between, uh, LRA, FPR, uh, local, so and so forth. So all documents, when it comes to the technical standpoint, FPR is there to make sure that all these, uh, equipments are actually within country. Then, uh, LRA and, uh, Ministry of Commerce, they will do the paperwork when it comes, uh, when it comes to those finances. So yes, indeed, we verify and even during the drilling operation, we are set this bar offshore, to work offshore, uh, during those drilling operations. So they show that, yes, indeed, we are offshore as well. So on day one of the drilling, uh, operation, and.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, well, let's go to Toronto. Toronto, whatsoever, Toronto. 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 You guys, the hearing and the team besides them, you answered that any of these companies, if they are continuing on lesson, they begin to work. When they realize that they have some commercial value or not, they have the right to exercise the right by selling it out. The only component government will receive is your tax component in the agreement. Is that correct?
No, Senator, there's a transaction fee in addition to the taxation.
Okay, that agrees. So I would like to know if, uh, Senator Snow, Batikua, or Otoya are like humans and they decided to have a partner, a draw, that they bid for these, uh, 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 oil plant. Would that be allowed?
Yes, honorable. They will even be tried already twice over any other person.
So me or this, so no Liberia have ever done that?
No.
Okay, with respect to the doors and the riverway or the seafront, they're succeeding us. Uh, I heard my colleague maybe the appetite is growing because the terrible exploration I've already tabled where there is anticipation that if you guess on the which is right, but under the law at equal to be provided that any mineral resources on the land or beneath the ground or in the sea belong to the Republic. Or equally so, a particular area that those exploration will take place, there will be pollution of water. The natural, natural oil and natural resources. Uh, so this area will, there will be water pollution. Besides that, fish and water, there will be some level of, uh, pollution of chemical that will affect some of those species. So in your agreement, are you telling me that you won't take this into consideration in this agreement? Prior to coming to us, is that what you say?
So Senator, there's a whole section on environmental safeguard. And because these agreements are not signed, um, the companies cannot conduct those, uh, environmental assessment. Before a company drill a well, there's a whole environmental requirement that a company has to go through. And that's why we have the EPA here. The EPA has official license to discover it, allowing them to drill. During that process, EPA asks all the environmental questions. It shows that all the environmental requirements are met. Throw for a well to you.
Thank you. In print. Yeah. The Minister of Justice just told us a question that the agreement has been signed. I'm hearing the local. No, sir. What you're saying, sir, uh, uh, so what you're saying is that you have the agreement of the company. When it's ratified, then they have access to the block. Then they cannot go and do the environmental assessment. Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's it. Right, redification.
But, but.
It means after you pass the legal process, it goes to the president and it's formalized. It's okay. Senator, go back.
Yeah, okay, uh, you talk about before that occur, it means that, uh, the document have been ratified, etc. But I can recall that in the exploration law, when you start in a community, there is 70% to 2% based on the assets that the money law. Huh?
Uh, drilling law.
Say, say, say a money law. They have to go, uh, to really love, uh, the great. Yeah, that's already part of the law. So, uh, Mr. President, Chairman, thank you very much. I rest for now.
Thank you, sir. Senator, you have the floor. Yep. Yeah, I'm not sure, the law that's far away. You're not here, was it? You're not here, was it?
I, I had people who are coming, but it's part of the story, it's part of the story. Thank you, sir. I have, um, the Oronto deal. And I'm looking at, uh, page 98 with a chair and. So, do you have the Oronto deal before you? You don't have this deal before us that is, that you have to work? You don't have this deal? None of you have this cabinet of the deal that was sent to us? So you came for a contract hearing and a contract you sent to us. Now you have a question?
In turn, do you have the soft or hard cabinet?
So what we talk.
Soft cabinet. Okay, then that cabinet. Your voice, when you can answer the question.
Let me ask my question again. My colleague asked why Oronto deal is not signed?
Honorable, the contracts are all signed. And you were presenting to the Senate for.
The one answer.
Senator Brown, was asked, the response was that they say it was not signed. So he would not vote, he said it's signed cabinet in Georgia. So I have Oronto deal. The hard cabinet, on page 98. If you have come on your cabinet, I will ask you what of this in my hand is correct or yours is correct or mine is safe. So maybe I don't know where I'm speaking from.
Senator Brown, please.
Yeah.
Uh, I would think that since the letter addressed to the Senate was signed by the president, make sure you lose agreement, the committee will also hold on to the report until we have the proper signature on those pages as, uh, Senator Brown has mentioned. Of any report is committed to the Senate.
So I have in my hand, taking this down. I have in my hand, on page 98 of the Oronto deal. The Marlin T. Logan sign.
Yeah.
On behalf of the Minister of Justice, there's a signature there. On behalf of the contractor, that is Oronto, signed by Queens Attic Easy. And then it is on behalf of the Minister, Minister of Justice. First, somebody signed for the Minister of Finance, there's a signature. And on behalf of the Minister of Justice of the Republic, there's a signature.
By sign.
It is signed. No, that's not the point, I mean. If the people who send this thing here don't know that I signed, what else you don't know about in this deal?
Honorable, he said that the contracts are signed. And what we gave to the president was not signed. He signed the cabinets in front of us and the, the government, that is, the little instruments.
Which cabinet did the president sign? That will ask you if you have cabinet of this deal because the president, they not signed them off. So which one did he sign before you?
I think maybe the office that sent it to you maybe must have sent the gold one.
I have a total deal here. It's on page 116. Marlin Logan sign. Senator, please, in the. The same, um, the same signature that represents the Ministry of Finance is here on total deal. And there is a signature representing total. And the same signature that represents the Minister of Finance is also here. It's on page 116 of the total deal and page 98 of the Oronto deal. His excellency the National Bureau did not sign or approve any of these. Any reason, question?
Um, honorable Dylan, it is well noted that those cabinets that you have are not signed. However, the cabinets that are signed were with the Office of the President. And, um, I would just appeal to you that those pages will be submitted to you as soon as.
So why you send me, why you send me, why you sent me? What are they reviewing? So you were sending the signature page letter?
Honorable Dylan, I apologize for the submission without the signature page. But again, I did not.
I think the negligence, as Roger Barson said, Dylan is coming strictly from because as Chair on the General Committee, the cabinets that have are all signed. Have all the signatures on them. So to have signed some, didn't sign some, leaving photo cabinet, I don't know why you did, but it has to be corrected. So with those in the Senate chat room, any senatorial possession of this agreement that has fully signed, you will have to review this company to have it replaced. And we do that before the committee meeting is in the better reading of the committee. But all my cabinets are signed.
So.
That one of the magazines I, I, I just said it, it's not coming. But my cabinets are all signed.
Senator, honorable.
Only the chair.
Yeah, uh, Mary took a decision. For all, on the process concessions submitted to this, uh, Senate be, uh, common of a soft cabinet. I want to go with the chairman as we see the soft cabinet of this improvement. No. I'm asking if the I C. Let me, let me reiterate this, Chairman. I'm asking if the I C have, have sent any soft cabinets at this agreement because.
I'm really for the soft cabinet. I, I. I'm really for the soft cabinets I would forward that in the Senate chatroom. Or, or.
So I was, I was speaking. I was speaking for a while, considerably, but. Until it is properly signed and approved. I have, I see that it's a production sharing contract between the Republic of Liberia and Oronto Petroleum Liberia Limited, Liberia Offshore Block, LP 15. Oronto Petroleum Liberia Limited. Is Oronto Petroleum Liberia Limited registered on the North of Liberia?
Thank you, honorable. Yes, they are registered on the North of Liberia.
Where are they headquartered? And how long have they been registered on the North of Liberia?
Officer Justice, any other?
Uh, I don't have sufficient information to say whether or not, uh, to indicate where they are headquartered or not. I'm not, unfortunately, the minister suggests was not represent Oronto, so.
Yeah, but in the mail to you, was a return address?
The essential is that we receive a bill from them. We have not received a bill from them, we deal with them.
LPRK, in the return address, what return address you have for Oronto Liberia? So please give the address.
Yes, so it's St. Call, it's 19th Street.
To you.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, so the government of Liberia is dealing with an entity and nobody from the government of Liberia representing here seem to know what Oronto is headquartered in Liberia. Am I assuming right?
No, I'm wrong.
So where is Oronto headquartered in Liberia?
19th Street.
19th Street, St. Call. How long has Oronto been illegally registered, operated in Liberia? Because this government, this agreement is supposed to be between the government of the Republic of Liberia and Oronto Petroleum Liberia Limited.
Local, you represent the state.
Senator, these are international agreements. The company that do negotiation, walk through their leader.
Mister Local, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman of Local. Uh, Mister Chairman of Local. This is a production sharing contract between the Republic of Liberia and Oronto Petroleum Liberia Limited. Where is Oronto headquartered? How long have they been operating in Liberia or, 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 or entity? That's a question.
That's a question, I was not aware, Senator. So when an international company expresses interest in the basin, they are trying on the law to have a book to register, local, sincerely.
Mister Novak, please. So it can seem to be a confrontation, a simple question. And the reason I asked you what I know, uh, Oronto is registered in Liberia is because I see the Liberia image.
Honorable Dylan.
Yeah, it's local, is Oronto registered in Liberia? How long have they been registered on original, the local market?
Okay, so they were registered on, um, October 28th, 2011. Yeah. The initial, the initial one that was October 15th, 2008.
Okay. And the last one?
The last one was September 16th, 2025.
So we take it that Oronto have been. So we take it that Oronto have been existing in Liberia since twenty oh eight, correct? Mr. Chairman, I will be requiring Oronto business registration and money from two thousand eight, every year renewed to determine that they have been existing or already in Liberia.
Task claims.
Task claims and everything.
Thank you. But you say the last one's September. My question is, what happened in September one month ago?
Yeah, one month ago, that one, review.
They renewed what is documented already before us, that they renewed it.
No.
Yes?
Before it came to you.
Uh-huh.
Before it came to you, it was due, because we had to see.
Do you have copy of Oronto's business registration?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So you say two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, twenty twenty-five, what they got? Is it review of the, is it registration or is new registration?
So for what I have here?
You should adjust your answer.
Okay. If you, if the incorporate a business into Liberia like the date in two thousand eight, the assumption is that you are a resident of Oronto, until you file articles of dissolution.
Correct.
Since they have never filed articles of dissolution, the assumption is that they are registered and incorporated and exist. Whether or not they are paying and renew their registration yearly as required, that is a determination that can be derived by continuing the rest of the tax authority.
No, Mr. Chairman, so the first contract, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the first agreement was it for Oronto P L C or Oronto Liberia Limited?
Exactly.
And this contract, is it Oronto Liberia Limited or Oronto P L C?
Uh, we have to refer to the agreement, which I don't have before me, unless I borrow the copies from Oronto.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
One reason, you know, others, all men, women, women, please, please, other, 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 the, the, the.
Now, now, excuse me. You either want this hearing or I'm inclined to suspend this hearing.
Yeah, I think so.
Now, this is a major hearing. You came here with people on the galleries, you came here with a staff all over, and nobody have a heart, a will for the agreement and who discuss it. But they're discussing it. That's why here I said team.
As a patient.
Because that's how it happen flow. The Chairman, well, I do respect, I think, our, our police.
I am prepared. We shall be the chairman.
You know, I think that I certainly believe what I know that I'm clear. And given the background, I will have a discussion before that. All right? And that is true, then, of course, that you have come prepared. We do them, come to the bed, you know, sit with the bed. So I think it was more the hearing.
I don't know, you have the, you have the copies all here, and you're asking everybody their copies, right?
It was more the hearing, I think, that's right. Now, the little copies. Now, the ones who send that, Charlie, say, I'm going to take this one. Send all the here for the copies.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Delong, please.
Thank you. Uh, call your hand. I've got two more questions. I'll make a case for us to have a second hearing regarding these issues. With the President's signature on these documents that will make it even more legal. On page eighty-two. On page eighty-two of the Oronto Deal. Uh, twenty-six. Let's start with, um, transfers and changes of truth on page seventy-eight of the Oronto Deal. Twenty-six point one. Now, the contract on no, any entity participating in the contract, in the contractor, as it is written in the law. Participating in the contractor, mission, assign, mortgage, pledge, or otherwise encumbered. For the purposes of this article twenty-six, any of the foregone is called transfer. Any of its rights and obligations arising on this contract or any of its property in or other Liberia use in carrying out petrol operations or them in accordance with the provision of this article twenty-six. What is it, what does it mean?
Justice? Yeah, and really, it's all crap, they, yeah, yeah. Speak with that. With your permission, just give me a couple of seconds.
Article twenty-six.
Twenty-six point one.
Uh, twenty-six point one. Page seventy-eight.
Yes, uh, Honorable Delong, the intent is a prohibition to just farm out the land for it. You don't have a right to just sell because you have.
How do you sell when you do not own?
You have a concession, you have right, you have capital, no interest in it.
And selling the right one from a legal, it's a sale.
Please, please.
Then you're a legal man, I just said that you don't have right to sell. You can sell when you don't own legal. We are not selling all blocks.
You're selling an interest.
We are.
They say amount to sell, you're selling an interest.
Sir, we are leasing our blocks.
You sell an interest.
We are leasing our blocks, Mr. Minister.
It's equivalent to selling an interest in the property.
We are leasing our blocks. So, with article twenty-six, what does it mean as was read? Give us meaning.
Yeah, um, if you read the second sentence. If you read the second sentence, we have permission, let me just read it. Any transfer not consented to in advance by the authority, I permit that, but it's. Constitutes a material default on the integrity of this contract and will not be recognized by the authority. So like I said, indicated earlier, it's a prohibition, prohibition against the concession there. That's essentially the idea behind this, probably based on the prior experience.
So article twenty-six is a prohibitive clause from the contractor in the land for a farm out.
Exactly, yes.
Benefit to the contract.
Appropriate to the contract, yes. With what's concerned, it's all for you to find out.
I know it. The public hearing, I want the public to hear it too. Because Oronto has an experience in this country.
I want to hear me.
I want the public to know that these guys, eh, are in a place below. Of course, article, I mean, uh, article twenty-eight or twenty, uh, twenty, yeah, yeah, yeah. On eighty-two, twenty-six point seven. When you talk about fifteen percent, the authority of participant of the fee, that means if there is a farm out, that's fifteen percent in a bit of a conversation. So if the block is leased for ten dollars and somebody, uh, subsidies is for, or farm out as required, for fifty dollars. The broker fifty percent share, fifteen percent of that fifty dollars, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, in addition to the, um, again, that's fifty percent of the dollar.
Sir. So you see that the problem, that goes step by step.
Fifteen percent, yes, those are on our.
That is, if the person finds out any amount they settle on lease or for, the broker fifty percent.
All right.
Why he found that percentage? One hundred twenty, one hundred thirty, one hundred forty, what is found fifteen percent?
He lost the parties.
Where?
What is that?
One hour royalty, eh, one hour royalty.
Royalty is already comprised of.
Follow, follow up on that question, please. Senator, if you lease from us for ten dollars, you lease it for fifty dollars, you are telling me it's fifteen percent of fifty dollars? Are you right?
Correct.
So is that the profit, and so the capital gain will be on fifty dollars or forty dollars?
The, the good for profit has to be kept, the capital gain tax is applied on that.
So the capital gain tax is applied on forty dollars, but your, your transfer will be on fifty dollars.
On fifty dollars, correct.
It's not on you, the profit.
No, 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 it's on the, the amount, see.
Senator, but, but, but coming to that, the cost you cover is eighty-five percent. Eighty-five percent, one of what, Oronto is fifty percent.
Which is about what?
But total is eighty-five.
Eighty-five percent, yes.
Yeah, so, so you, anybody, now I'm trying to get a question out.
So last one.
I say you're really laughing with. Yeah, go ahead, Senator.
Thank you. On page number two, article territory of the Oronto Deal. We're talking security for contractors' performance. Local territory one of the territory four, but I'm only longer, uh, uh, with territory one and two, three. The adequate security shall be an irrevocable guarantee from the ultimate parent company of an entity participating in the contractor or from the credit water pulling subsidiary or the ultimate parent of such entity substantially in the form set in annex three. So, uh, territory one says the contractor shall provide adequate security for the performance of the contractors' combination on this contract and provide in this article thirty-three. Is there a security guarantee to the contractor that have been seen, viewed and verified, certified by the authority, question?
Yes, we have the parent company guarantee.
Uh, do we need to know the parent company guarantee or is only left to L P R A and Local?
No, Honorable, it's also something that's.
Did you submit that when this contract was submitted? So as you gave us the opportunity to do research and verify. Mr. Chairman.
So you mean, you have spoken to the submitter?
Mr. Chairman, I give you one second.
Thank you. I'll send a bit probably, I'll prove for my saying, I feel it, and that's at the time. Thank you for the chairman, thank you. Thank you for the chairman. Thank you for the chairman, witnesses. I'm very happy for the revelation that, uh, the Oronto company has four of the all blocks that we are talking about. And in these, Oronto says it craving for development. Development is at most level, Oronto's company. So I'm very happy.
We did like it there already.
Senator, Senator, bonuses. I have interest in knowing or confirming the particular amount of Senator's bonus from.
Signature.
From both companies. And whether money can be deposited in, in the, they consider they dare fund a car of the government.
Thank you, Honorable, for that question. So for Salsa and India, we have twelve million. And for Oronto, we have thirteen million plus two million for social corporate.
I won't do the total, I, I'm not a good.
It's twenty-seven, twenty-seven million.
For both of them, right?
Yes. And now this, we will get it upon ratification, upon ratification.
How do you start? So, uh.
Yes, so the.
Father, I mean, why?
Yeah, after.
Sir, yeah. Yes, so this is one of the, the reasons we have this, uh, reputation request before the Senate and the whole legislature. So these are some of the contingency consideration that we have in the projects. So in order to be sure that, uh, so both the passage of the project and the passage of these agreements are somehow entirely. Like I said earlier, when I started the hearing, the revenue component of this contract is sent to the wisdomiest committee in the revenue, uh, session of the past. We have to be clear on the revenue component before passage. So this is, for the public to go here, this is not just the only hearing. It may decide the public or private or the committee room, but there will be whole hearing on the revenue aspect of this P S C before this committee take a decision.
After that, I will.
In that event, that's why I said this hearing is not, is not a bunch of.
To the.
Senator, sorry, you still have this black hole.
To the Saudi that witnesses who had expertise when it comes to their drilling. You know, exploration of all block in deep water, what is the cost for exploration of a single block?
Uh, because. Because for the, for the record, we have, have companies spending upwards of forty million dollars. As a minimum, it's spent for oxygen. And that was by African Petroleum.
So what about?
And, uh, we have Sharon spending close to a hundred million dollars, which include part of the drilling and other operation you have to do before drilling. So it's between the forty million to a hundred million dollars.
I read that deep water exploration is very expensive. It's estimated at two hundred million. We are forty million, eh.
No, uh.
I read it. I say I read, I read it.
No, uh.
I don't know what I'm writing. And we are arguing with you now. I say I read. And I was informed that deep water exploration is very expensive. And it is estimated at two hundred million. If I'm to operate on our previous, that will matter. What financial and technical due diligence guarantee will provide to ensure Oronto Petroleum has the independent capacity to fully finance and execute a deep water program. Like I was, I will, that my research took about two hundred million. What guarantee do you have on that, like a very good way? That do not take it, then the way they, they, they do the majority in there, they don't. They'll be two hundred million.
Okay, uh, thank you. So like you said, uh, you said two hundred million, which I would have dispute, but the difference from forty million depends where you are. Drilling does not necessarily look into account for just the. Don't mean to account for just the operation, but there are other pre, uh, work that are done before drilling is executed. So relative to that, I will agree with you, but varies from, from different water depth to different water depths.
I come from River says. Before being money to go there, our main source of income had to do with the featuring industry. We are fisher there, our group go there. But I saw the human, the builder man, he have caught here. So we have fishy business. You are telling me that we in deep water. So contamination is not issue while we in deep water. But once your exploration are taking place. You see what it costs fail. Eh, fates and other things will be contaminated. In this agreement. Do you have anything that contractors will cover one hundred percent or call. If major or still, uh, contractors, one hundred percent. They will honor everything in case of anything of that occurred.
Yes, sir. You need to show them now. It's also a meaningful indication now. Yeah, and just, just in my discussion to. But not fully yet said. Then what we refer to as oil contingency plan. So before drilling exercise commences, you have oil company telling us their contingency, their contingency plan in the event of an oil spill. So oil spill normally is a, is an accident that will occur during drilling, but most often companies tend to. Not even want to experience that, so they do everything possible to minimize any possibility of spill. So there always a contingency plan by the company for my own experience, all the well we drill offshore by view. We have all the company telling us their contingency plan, so when the drilling executed, that is done, thank you.
No, you're not. I want to believe before you gave Oramdo. Oil block number eleven, six, seven, eighteen, twenty nine. Who has seen the platform. And you view the platform, you saw that you have some geoscientists. An engineer. That can do the work. Because. There are some geoscientists that can do the work. He tells us how many geoscientists and engineers have that will be on the front of tax of deep water exploration.
Uh, so, uh, first of all, we have available people, one of such persons, uh, your eyes were speaking to you. I've worked with the.
Do you know about Oramdo?
No, uh.
I'm asking that Oramdo has given you that look, we're going to do deep water exploration. We have geoscientists that can do the work. We got engineers that can do the work, and now you, uh, you're not for them.
Yeah, so most of the time when, uh, for my own experience with.
Why you be talking, you be talking.
No, no, you, I, I honestly, the question definitely sent it off. So most often before a company execute their work. They usually will set at a time where it used to be local, they send the profile of all the people who go to work on the rig. So and then we validate that most people who go to work, in fact, they, they, in fact, hire service companies, so. They profile all of the geoscientists, great engineers, are all submitted during G O C with the department of view. So we are actually aware about the qualification of who are we doing.
Do you have any list of that nature from there?
Well, I guess, maybe check someone I can.
I mean, it's normally no I can. The way the sector works. And I can be corrected. Even the super media, they, they share on the X on the total. Total energy. They will all fight for the wealth. But once they get the wealth, they partner to drill the well. Am I right? So even when Oramdo acquire the well, if it's rectified, you don't have a technical ability or capability to drill the well, they definitely honor their partners to do it. Look, while he can do it alone, he's done for hundreds of millions, so even the super giants, they partner to do a work.
Correct.
Do I know? Deep water training. Uh, total energy. Have a specialty in deep water operation. Uh, do we have anything in the agreement? That we can work with total for knowledge transfer? That expertise you have? Do we have anything in the agreement? That look, we don't have people that specialize in deep water. So total, you have to train our people. They, they can't get in the other city agreement for training. That's something for training of one percent million. Do I have a plan in the agreement to sell that drilling, to do deep water training?
Yes, thank you, Honorable, for that question, yes, we have that in the project, knowledge transfer.
I saw me.
Thank you, Senator, for it, Senator, uh, you're the feeling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm very. Um, I'll leave note of recognition. I'll go to a simple issue, price one case. What is? What is the definition of market? Value? It should, one, I'm referring to the page. Page sixty one. Disposal of crude oil production. Now, when you dispose of this. And I understand this contract is supposed to tend to send to be disposed if the need is there in our areas. What is the ma- market value? I look at your definition. I would prefer the Minister of Justice to look at this. And ask a question, because it, it hangs on delegation.
Is it Oramdo or Tulsa?
No, I don't know which one it is. Because all of them have the same, there are no differences in that. Oramdo, Oramdo have fifteen, uh, who spend. Page sixty one, who spend, and most, um, there's a few minor differences in some contracts. So specifically.
What section are you reading?
It's a justice nineteen, answer is not nineteen point two.
Honorable Senator, Senator, uh, although you specifically before you go answer, this is not just a legal declaration, the experts are here, so probably they are better suited to answer this.
Okay, that, that, that's right, I'm saying to you.
Senator, there's two kinds of crew.
Stop, stop, stop. I don't want to waste time.
I'm trying to define market value.
No, no, you said two types of crew, I know. You have a sweep. What can we have here?
We have Brent and since they are E T I.
Okay.
So what is saying here, the market value, because.
No, 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 no. What is the market value that you're referring to in this particular contract?
Is the average value, average corporate crew price.
On what?
On the market or on the raw market?
Raw market, is it still in this agreement?
But that's because this is market.
No, is this, is this in this agreement, because your market value, check your definition, you see where I'm going? Where I'm going. Where, where, where I'm going to. If I'm going to buy domestically. Compared to somebody buying in Nigeria, the price cannot be the same. The price value just cannot be the same, because in Nigeria, you have logistics costs, you have all kinds of other costs. So that's why I'm going to say to you, your definition is not clear in this, in this document. We definitely move on to the next. Uh, you change another. Uh. What is the, what does the procurement, the petroleum law says of, of. Avoiding blocks? Do you just avoid any kind of block or is there, is there procedure that you must follow?
Thank you, Honorable, Senator. So we have three methods to go through. For the hiring. And the competitive, maybe. We have direct negotiations, we have executive application. In this case, we have a direct negotiation.
So with that. How do you acquire with direct? Are you required to pay for the seismic? Information?
So, um, in this case, the law does not bend this.
So it's discretionary?
Yes.
Okay, so I would take note of that, I think we need to prepare. Yeah. Uh, move on to the next. You got, maybe referring to page forty two of the Oramdo deal. Two hundred, I mean, two million dollars for charitable health and education. I will go to the authority. Why authority?
So because the, the authority represents the state. So it's not for the authority, but because the authority represents the state.
Uh, now. But you have a corporate social responsibility project facility there now. But now you have two million dollars going to why? The authority? I think. Move to the next one, last question, audit. Why is the. Auditor general of the office of like this. I'm having a question, revenue, because revenue are meant to by the chairman who can handle that, so.
So based on the agreement, the agreement is actually between the state and the company, and again, the authority represents the state. And we have professionals that are true for that, so they are responsible to do the audits. Until we need G S C, we also ask them to come.
Oh, uh, uh, we're not talking. Small money. We're talking state resource, state asset that they. Have, that created in G S C, they have the authority. To audit. All government agencies, what are you controlling? The only money, what are you receiving money from government? What are you spending on? But now in this contract. It seems as though to me we're bypassing G S C so that they don't have the authority to go in and say they want to buy, we have a situation that in my mind, uh, yeah, in my mind. This contract. Uh, you said applicant laws. Those the G S C act. Applicant law. In this case.
Yes, so since the G S C can audit the contract. And we are there to manage.
No, no, not, not in contracts. It proceeds if they hit production, because that's where I'm going. You know, uh. The two contracts are bred, I mean, unfortunately, I don't have all. I have about sixteen, which I think is probably generic for Oramdo. We have about six generic or total. So the two, I would just assume that they are generic and the other rest will be deceived, so they are likely to steal. So I, I will, I will base my. My position on those two. I'm concerned about that, and I want to take note, Mr. Chairman, I respect for the. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to strike away. And the request that will receive.
At Focus on Liberia, we discuss everything Liberia, from education to politics, arts and culture, entertainment, agriculture, history, religion, family and technology. Focus on Liberia uncovers and showcases the best of Liberia and shows the world the truth about Liberia. We educate, elevate and promote all things Liberia. We conduct interviews, panel discussions, debates and more. Tune in to Focus on Liberia on Facebook and YouTube and be a part of the stories that make up the news.
This is Focus on Liberia and I want to tell this job.
So Senator, the, uh. The production sharing contract is, is at least, um, agreement for the, um, Senator Plas. And it's called production sharing because. Uh, proceeds from that contract is shared between the government and the contractor.
What is the intent? What is the intent of such a contract?
When you say the intent.
Okay, let me go further.
Yeah.
From. Why it is production sharing, I think that. At some point. The million over production.
Over produce, yes.
They are going to share that production. That's it, Senator.
Thank you.